Calling to this Select Board meeting for July 30, 2024. A few things I want to just mention. The room is different. The whole world's upside down for us. We're now, this is a little bit back to the future. This is the way that the room used to be many years ago. Okay, we do a public comment. Does anyone in the room want to make a public comment? Oh, might I just back up quickly? I should let you know that this is being broadcast by the Needham Channel, the town's YouTube channel and via Zoom. And it's being recorded for publication later viewing. In accordance with the open meeting law, if anyone else in attendance wishes to record the meeting, they are required to notify the chair first so the chair may inform any of the attendees. The observer has confirmed they are recording. If there's anyone else in attendance who wishes to record, please let me know. Thanks. All right, public comment? Anyone wishing to make public comment? Miles, anyone on Zoom?
There's not a future.
Okay. Then the first order of business is Purple Heart Day. We have a proclamation. Ready?
The Town of Needham, 2024 Purple Heart Day proclamation. Whereas the residents of the Town of Needham have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for service members who selflessly serve their country and our community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of service members from Needham who served in harm's way in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many Needham residents were awarded the Purple Heart for their sacrifice, having been wounded in action while engaged in combat. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit on August 7, 1782, in Newburgh, New York, by General George Washington. The award was made of purple cloth shaped as a heart with the word merit sewn upon it. And whereas August 7 is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Appreciation Day. Now therefore, be it resolved that Needham be declared a Purple Heart community. And furthermore, be it resolved that August 7 be proclaimed Purple Heart Day in Needham. The Select Board encourages residents and businesses to display the American flag and recognize Purple Heart recipients honoring the service and sacrifice of our military personnel. Signed this 30th day of July, 2024.
Thank you. I'd welcome a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, there is actually a ceremony on the 7th at the gazebo at 5:00?
7:00 PM?
7:00.
I think. I think it's 5:00. Yeah. It's on my calendar. But.
Will I check it?
It's 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. Okay. Thank you. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next up, a public hearing. We have EverSource grant of location 91 Winding River Road. Joanne Callender, is she on?
She'll be transferring over right now, Mr. Chair. She's here.
Good evening.
Hi, Joanne.
Joanne, good to see you.
Thank you.
All right, what do you have for us?
EverSource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately six feet of conduit from pole 382 over 10 onto the private property of 91 Winding River Road and asks to provide electric service to the new single-family home at that location.
Okay. Thank you. Kate, is everything in order?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Anyone on the board have questions, comments? Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience have a question or comment? Come on up. Take a seat. Absolutely. Come up to the chair. Just please give us your name and address.
Sure. My name is John Krikorian, and I'm at 100 Winding River Road, Needham, Massachusetts. And so I received the notice of this meeting and enclosed a map of, and I tried to understand what was going on, and I realized that I think the map is mislabeled.
Okay.
So this is the Conroy's property, 75.
I have that map, too.
This is 91, which is the Harrington's property. And across the street is labeled 100 Winding River Road, which is my property. Actually, I don't think that's me. I'm over here. This is owned by a different family. So I'm assuming that this, whatever they're doing, and I really didn't understand what they're doing, but they're doing something. I'm assuming just to hook up a gas line. And it's gonna be.
Electric.
Electric. Oh, it's not gas.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm much less concerned about that. So I'm assuming that this should be corrected, and this isn't in front of my property and in front of the, our butter.
Okay. So Joanne, the pole is number 382/10?
That is correct.
Okay. So you're taking it down off there. It goes across.
Right onto the 91 winding.
Okay. Into 91 winding. So that's correctly labeled. So that's a pole. That's where the dig is, right there, the red.
Yeah, and this is at, what, 86, I think?
I don't know. That says 100.
No, that's, it's not.
Okay. Very good.
That's me.
Okay.
I'm not there.
So you're just not on here. You are completely not on the map.
Correct.
Okay.
So this parcel is mislabeled, you're saying?
I think so.
Okay.
So either this is in front of me and these are mislabeled, or this side is mislabeled and I'm over here.
Okay.
Which I think is what's going on.
It's absolutely going right onto 91 from the pole that's in front of the house to the left.
Right, okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
So it should have no impact on the property across the street.
Yeah, no, I actually, when I got this, didn't know whether it was electrical or gas. And if it's not gas, do what they want.
Thank you.
John, thank you for bringing that up. Correct.
Glad you got to visit us.
We have to vote.
Yes, thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Is there anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Miles?
No one has their, had their hand raised. No one's hands are raised.
Okay. I would welcome a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately six feet of conduit in Winding River Road.
Second.
Okay. Any thoughts, comments, criticisms? Okay. Let's come to all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Joanne, thanks so much. Okay. Next up, are we on good for time here? Public hearing, outdoor dining. I want you to go ahead.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thanks. We have an outdoor dining license, Y Inc., doing business as Sweet Basil. Do we have Dave Becker?
He's not here.
Okay.
I just checked outside. I'll send him in.
Okay.
Okay. Well, in the meantime, why don't we move the consent calendar?
Great idea.
I propose we move the consent calendar, Mr. Chair.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Unanimous.
You can open and continue the.
Okay, let's jump right. Okay, so we're gonna jump.
That's 5:10? Class two motor, class two motor vehicle at 5:10? Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Just trying to be subtle, but it's a little tough.
Subtle.
A little WD-40, okay.
Lesson to us all.
Okay. The next item then, we gotta jump, is to a public hearing, application for a class two motor vehicle deal license, the KGK Group Incorporated. We are open this hearing, but we are also going to continue this hearing until September 24. Okay? So we're opening and closing.
Opening and.
Opening, suspending.
Opening, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Do you need a motion to continue?
Yes. Let's take that. Want to make it?
I'll move to continue the hearing until September 20 at?
24.
24, excuse me, 24th at?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Okay. Excellent.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Discussion. Okay. Hearing done. Let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right. Do we have Dave Becker yet?
We do not, Mr. Check.
You guys are two minutes early. We need another minute.
Okay.
Well, how was everybody's day?
I hate filming.
I mean, we've already moved the consent agenda, so.
That's right. We could do it again. So we're weighing on fuel storage. We have to work that till how, what time, Kate?
Forty more seconds.
Okay.
For you to go.
Let's tee it up. The next agenda item for today.
So silly.
At 5:15? All right, it's 5:15, we're good? Okay. The next hearing, a public hearing, application for a fuel storage license at 58 Woodbine Circle. We have Ronald Gavel, the fire inspector, Jay Steves, the fire inspector, LeFay Oliveria Oliveira, applicant representative.
Come on up, have a.
Are we missing some others?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Good to see you. Welcome.
Ronnie.
Hi.
All right. So you're making application in accordance with provisions to install 1,000 gallon underground propane storage tank at 58 Woodbine Circle.
That's correct.
Okay. Tell us about it. What's happening?
So, yeah, so at 58 Woodbine Circle, it's a new construction.
Yep.
And so we have a couple of appliances, some water heaters that will require propane. So we decided to go with the gallons, 1,000 gallon tank so that we could do less visits for, you know, like maintenance, and that was our intention.
Okay. Great. Anything in order?
Nothing in order, all right.
Is there any backup? Can this leak? Can it explode? What does propane?
Not really.
Okay.
It's not something you hear about often.
Okay. I'm curious. Why, why propane? I'm just.
So there's no gas being provided on that street. So the only option was propane or all electric.
Right. And when was this project permitted?
Back in, I think it was May or April.
Okay. So would that, that would have been before or after the specialized code went into effect?
It was July.
Do we know what the date is, that that goes?
July 1 of '24.
July, yeah. Yeah, that's the new one. Okay. Any comments, questions?
Are there, so since there's no gas on the street, other houses on the street, do they also have propane tanks underground?
I've seen a couple of homes where they, I think it's all propane.
Okay. Tanks on the side?
Yeah. Well, the house on the right of Woodbine is propane, and it's underground as well.
Okay.
And is this, is this being built like on spec or is, does?
It is a spec, yes.
It's a spec. How come you decided to go with propane instead of electric?
We figured propane would be easier to work with and more reliable than electric.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Miles, anyone on Zoom?
We have no hands raised on Zoom, Mr. Chair.
Great.
Mr. Chair, could I just note that under our new policy, the licensee has to file a certificate of registration every year in April so that there's, you know, people are looking at the tank and making sure.
Okay. Because it's supposed to be yearly inspection? Okay.
And so in this case, the licensee is who?
It's the actual, the owner occupant of the land that holds the license.
Okay.
It will be the, I assume the owner will own it by?
After the sale.
After the sale, it'll be the owner.
How long do his tanks last?
A while. I can't believe it or not, especially underground.
Oh, really? Okay. Okay. How many years?
We've never had an issue with them.
Okay. So we're thinking a long time.
Yeah. Like your smaller ones, your home ones only go for 10 years.
Okay.
Your propane, you'd be grilled with the larger ones underground because of the paint they use.
Okay.
The way they backfill it with the sand.
Okay.
They don't just backfill it with dirt, so it's pretty safe.
Okay.
It's all allowed on concrete pads.
I'm sorry.
Or pads.
Okay.
On top, you're saying?
On the wall.
On the floor.
They have acid to it.
Okay.
It used to be just flood plain, we used to do that, but now we just make them do it everywhere.
Do we have many of these in Needham? These large?
Mostly 500, but in some cases they do 1,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair, one more question. So is that the fire inspector's job to make sure that it's inspected every year?
No, it's the actual company. We inspect the installation and then the company, whether it's, who are you gonna use?
We're gonna use Midway Oil.
So we need Midway Oil.
So provide us a tank.
Carol and Wayne who will install.
Okay.
And then.
They will provide us a tank and they will make sure that everything is 100% when we install it.
Yeah.
And for the annual inspections thereafter?
Yes. They, they're in charge of that. They take care of it.
Okay. So, but so there's no one on the town side who's monitoring that it gets filed?
They do have to file them with the town clerk. We can, I assume they have a list and we can.
The annual registration is filed to the town clerk.
So there's a list in it.
Okay. And Midway, in this case, Midway Oil, would they? Excellent. Any other comments? Okay. I would welcome a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board vote to approve and authorize the chair to sign a license for JP Development Properties to install 1,000 gallon underground propane storage tank at 58 Woodbine Circle.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. It'll be interesting to see if this is like one of the last propane tanks to go into Needham, because with the new opt-in code, so this is like the end of an era. All right.
We'll need you on, don't worry.
We always need you. Okay, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a good one, guys.
Thank you very much. Do we have Dave Becker yet? Okay. I'm sure he's bringing us through. Okay. Can we talk about, the next issue would be non-occupational sick leave policy.
Tatiana.
Tatiana Swanson?
Director of Human Resources. Hi. Since the transition of the Personnel Board to the Human Resources Advisory Board, we've been bringing new policy updates to be approved on consent agenda. However, this update, this policy update to the non-occupational sick leave actually somewhat affects the way that we manage benefits. So we wanted you to weigh in on the big change. And the big change is mostly to the section 5.3, personal, personal and family health leave. This section has repurposed the previous extended sick leave program that we had, which was a policy that allowed the town manager to award up to 60 days of sick leave, paid sick leave, on extreme circumstances when employees had extenuated, exhausted all of their leave. Now, once you were awarded these 60 days, that's basically all you got. It's a good policy, but again, it was only really applicable to extreme cases where people had ran out of all their sick leave and they were still dealing with a personal or a health issue with families. So what this new program does is allow for somewhat of a paid leave. The town has long recognized a need to support newer employees who are dealing with a personal health or a family health situation. We have the federal Family and Medical Leave Act, but that leave is unpaid. We also have a generous sick leave accrual policy that doesn't, you know, that our sick accruals don't expire. However, newer employees who are coming into the town did not have any recourse to get paid if they were suddenly faced with a, you know, medical or a parental family leave situation. What this policy does is take that allowance by the town manager and convert it into something that is much more available. It is, it provides for the first four weeks of leave to be at the employee's, you know, expense using their accruals. The next four weeks of leave are paid at 50%, and the employees are able to use 50% of their accruals to complete, to make themselves whole. And then the last four weeks are paid, are paid at 100%. You know, in the, in the, in the instance that the leave has to extend for all 12 weeks of, of the allowed under FMLA law. So the criteria and reasoning for these follows the FMLA policy in, you know, eligibility and purpose. But it does, our policy does have a few caveats that extends to domestic partners and anybody living with the employee at the time of the, of the illness. And also in, in extenuating circumstances, we allow the town manager to waive the 1,250 hours required of work, or 12, or 12 months of work. And again, this is a strategy for retention, recruitment, mental wellness and well-being for our employees, as well as inclusion in our, in our attempt to increase diversity in our workforce. We feel it's just, we're just trying to keep up with the times here.
And we are also keeping up with the state program that the cities and towns don't opt into, which does provide.
The PFMLA.
PFMLA, which people might be coming from a private sector have access to, and then they come here and they, they say, where's your paid?
Yeah. Where is your paid parental leave? And we're like, well, you know, so this is trying to address that gap. We do get inquiries about the PFMLA and like, I think it's no, municipalities were exempt from it, so we haven't bought into the program.
Okay.
Questions? Is there an option for the municipal to participate in that program?
It's really complicated because generally speaking, our sick leave benefits are better than the PFMLA. They just, in very certain, certain circumstances, they, they aren't. So in these particular ones, they aren't, so.
We have a younger, newer workforce. I'm actually part of the senior team now, and I've only been here for 11 years. So it is addressing that gap for those employees that don't have the longevity with the town where they were able to accrue enough time to pay themselves in case of emergency, so.
We're pretty much self-insuring this as opposed to paying the state.
Mr. Chair, so is this going to be equivalent from the employee's standpoint to this PFMLA? Obviously, we're structuring it differently and doing it differently, but well, from the employee's standpoint, is it equivalent?
It's actually more generous. Because with PFMLA, you have to financially contribute into that program. We, we're not required, and that is for accruals, leave accruals.
So there's no cash contribution?
There's no cash contribution, yeah.
You may.
And so, so I wasn't clear. It sounds like for a new employee, right, they haven't accrued anything yet. So all that policy about first 100% coming from your accruals and the second with 50% coming, like, none of that would be in place if it was somebody who was a new employee. So, so are we anticipating that in most cases, we're just relying on Kate waiving that requirement? Or what are we really thinking is going to happen? Most people come in with three weeks of vacation and they very quickly get a couple of weeks of sick leave. So, you know, by the end of the first year, they would, you know, unless there's extraordinary circumstance, immediately.
They should have enough accrued to be able to pay themselves in the way that we have a structure. So for any newcomer, all they're required to have in the bank with all of the leave together is six weeks. And then they'll be, they'll be made whole. So we feel it's, it's going to address the newer employees in that we already are providing that coming in through the door, so there's not a long period of waiting before this policy is useful to you.
Do we have a sense of how many people this is or how much this will end up costing the town? I mean, how often does this happen?
This policy is just the non-represented employees, so we have about 120 of them. But we're hiring a lot more people of childbearing age and their spouses.
As well as employees who, you know, are going into times of their life where they have to get care of for aging parents. Now, like I said, someone who has been here for a number of years, like such as myself, I have a good number of sick hours banked, so I am able to rely on that if I, if the need arises. Like I said, this policy was created for recruitment and retention.
You did tell me you knew how many people had taken FMLA leave in the last year. Do you remember how many?
Yeah.
But yeah, it was. More than we thought.
It was more than we thought, yeah.
More, more new employees than we thought or more employees than we thought?
I think it was a good mix of both, yeah.
The unpaid FMLA.
We did have a number of people on unpaid FMLA, on, yeah, on unpaid FMLA, or people who ran out of time.
You can use your own time for.
Right. And we had a couple of people, we offered extended sick leave. There's some other sick bank provisions through the collective bargaining agreements. But what we want is something that is accessible to everyone.
And maybe this is step one, but we, it's a big step for us.
We're, yeah, we're hoping to make it universal eventually.
And this is something you get asked about?
Yes.
When people are considering us?
When people are coming in, speaking to us about benefits. Certainly, even in my own department, you know, I have people who are looking to start families. And, and this is obviously a preoccupation of theirs, trying to figure out how they're going to pay themselves for 12 weeks, not having enough time in the, in the town to be able to, to do that.
Tatiana, we also did sort of a brainstorming session with our leadership team, and I think this was the number one family-
Or the exercise with the dots.
We had a- It's got a lot of dots.
We had a number of benefits that the town currently doesn't offer that we were looking to explore, and, and we, we gave people stickers to, you know, it's a common exercise to put up what they thought was most important for the town to explore and, and offer, and this was by far the first thing, parental leave and family leave was the first thing, that people were mostly interested in us exploring as an actual benefit and not something you could only get through longevity.
Great. Go ahead.
Oh, I guess this is 5.3.2. In the private sector, my understanding is that usually it's the reverse, that, that the employer will pay the first portions at a higher percent and then later portions will be split or lower. But this is the reverse.
Different, I mean, we've seen, we, I went through a lot of private policies and a lot of other municipal policies, try to come up with something that was palatable for the town and also for the select board and for the employees. We feel this is a fair split, given that, you know, there's no monetary contribution by the employee, is this the use of their leave and, you know, the town contributes some towards it. Plus, in the past, we've only provided 60 days of leave only, so I wanted to sort of mirror that in, in, in the way that we split it.
Do you do half days? How do you person this out?
So it would be the half days, like our-
Can someone say, you know, if it's days, 60 days, can they take a half day, one day, or?
Oh, I see, yeah, so for, for weeks five through eight, what, the time that they will take, it will be, we would just pay for 50% of the time that they're out. So if they were to take, like, intermittent leave, is that what you mean, like, they're here and they're not?
Elderly parent and they have to do something.
So FMLA does have an intermittent clause, so you can, you, you know, there might be instances where you don't need to be out, you know, straight, you can be out a week, maybe need to take care of something, you know, for two, two, three days a week, or there is incidents or lapses that happen every so often. We will just count, we will just keep track of, of what week you're in, and depending on that, the, the benefit would apply accordingly. We do that with the FMLA anyways right now for intermittent leave because altogether you get 12 weeks in a 12-month period. So if they're not taking all of their time up, up front, then we kind of have to keep track of what, you know, how many weeks have made up with, with the time off, either partial days or full days.
And I know you probably don't have numbers for this, but how many fish do you think get off the hook when hiring people that said, oh, you don't have this, go elsewhere?
We don't really get into benefits until they're sort of through the door almost, you know, that's when we, we advertise all of our benefits in our postings, but we don't get deep into what is covered and what isn't covered until they're sort of already here. But I do believe that this is going to make us much more attractive in the, in the way of recruiting and retention, because, like I said, there's people who have, have unfortunately had to have gone out due to pregnancy or other things unpaid, and that's probably not something that we want to, we won't be able to compete with other employers if we continue to do this anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Is this, so, is this personal family health leave distinct from the FMLA, or could it be stacked essentially?
It follows the criteria, so FMLA is unpaid. So what we're trying to do here is for people who are approved for FMLA, try to give them, you know, a solution for how to make, how to pay themselves while they're out. So it will follow that criteria, but-
It can't get 24.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. With a little bit more flexibility for domestic partners. But yeah, no, it won't be stacked, it's, it's one leave, yeah. It addresses the paid and not the time, if that makes more sense.
Anything else? I would welcome a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to approve the revised non-occupational sick leave policy.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All right, let's have a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You know.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before Tatiana, if I could ask, so we've done a couple, this a couple of different ways, does it make sense for the very minor changes consent, but the ones that are changing a policy that we bring them and have this discussion, does that make sense to you? And we also are discussing many of them with the HR board-
Yes.
Because they gave us feedback on this.
We, we have a huge initiative to update our policies because a lot of them have not been looked at for a while, so we're in this policy update mode, so just whatever-
Some of them don't really, they, they're just changing, like, sort of an approach and language from 1990 when I wrote them, you know, but they don't change anything that is actually a benefit versus this is a change to benefits.
Yeah, this is good to know about.
You just keep us posted if we're not doing them-
As long as, as long as we guys keep it moving.
Backup provided on the consent agenda, then any one of us could say we need-
Yeah, yeah. And just so you know, we also run them by the HR advisory board and their helpful.
Thank you very much, this is, this is huge, I hope you realize, thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing. It's, it's almost autumn, so nothing says autumn like outdoor dining at Sweet Basil for Yates Incorporated doing business at Sweet-
It's going to be a lovely autumn.
It's July.
It's almost August 1st.
Somebody said recently that once you get past the 4th, it's over.
Don't ever say that, no.
Well, I have a six-year-old, I'm kind of looking forward to it, I'm like-
I understand that.
All right, good to see you, thanks for coming. Okay. So tell me about your restaurant, you want to do outdoor dining?
So what I, what I was hoping to do is something similar to what we've been doing the last few years, the two Jersey barriers, uh, two parking spaces with Jersey barriers, and then, I think they're numbered even so that they go, like, the pansy artwork goes in online. And then three tables in the front of the window, like, each window would get a table.
Okay.
And, yeah, that's what I was hoping to, I'm going to do.
Okay. So, and you are the town's sole remaining carry-in alcohol license, so this is just for, this is not a liquor license?
It's for the public way.
Just public way, all right. Any questions, comments?
So this is gonna be ongoing, correct?
The, the planning board has allowed it, it's, it's no longer in pandemic regulation.
Right, so this goes to November 30th, and then with this, the season, right?
The parking spaces are seasonal.
Right, okay.
And should Dave want to come back again next year, according to this plan, he has permission to do that within the licenses that will be available next year to do that. If the plan changes, then he would be back in front of people, but-
That's right.
For the same plan, it continues forward.
Okay.
So in that sense, he does this once and he's ready for next year.
That's good.
Then it's just a renewal.
Yeah.
Okay. Is it worth it?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think, I think it is, it's, uh, it's nice, you know what I mean? I mean, everybody likes to eat outside, and a night like tonight would be great, you know, once the sun starts to go down, and then, but yeah, so I think it's one of those things where I, I think I even told him last week, is the, on a, on a really busy night, you'll just notice that the inside's empty-
Okay.
And on the outside's-
Okay.
Full, but what I have realized is that if you don't do it, then you lose out to the other people that have done it. So that's, you know, so if nobody could do it, I probably wouldn't be upset if we couldn't do it. And I'm not saying that as like a, you know, I'm just trying to be frank, but if, uh-
Okay. That was a bocce court idea.
I know, I thought that would be fun, you know.
Excellent.
I mean, restaurants do that, they do kind of ridiculous stuff and, and, I mean, during COVID, I had these, like, you know, daydreams of like, when it started to get cold out, do a duck boat on the parking spaces where you could only sit six people at a time and charge like a crazy amount of money, but have it be for a fundraiser, and just have it be one elegant table that's like in the middle of a duck boat, you know, I don't know if the town would go for that.
Dave, if you could figure out where the bocce court could go inside.
Yes.
All right, here we go.
Yeah.
All right, excellent. Any other comments? All right, I would welcome a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to approve an outdoor dining license for Yeet Incorporated doing business at Sweet Basil.
Do you guys know where that comes from?
It is that, yeah. I mean, I hear it from my teenager all the time.
So this was before that.
Yeah.
But I think it's simple, like, so I'm from Newburyport originally-
Yeah.
And there's a word up there that's like aloha. It's like, it means hello, goodbye, it means you owe me money, it means no, you don't, no, I don't. It means like, and they had to ban it every time there's a Newburyport sports team that does well, they banned it on TV because like, or like at the games, because they're, you just, all you'd hear the whole time was like, yeet, 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 you know. And somebody would score, be like, yeet, and if the ref made a bad call, you'd, yeet, like, it was just constant, so they made it so you're not allowed to say it in sports. But it was like an old fishermen term, so they'd, they'd go out on like the main boat, like Winslow Homer style.
Yeah.
And then they'd have like smaller boats go out, and then if like a fog came in, they couldn't see where they were, so they'd cut, they'd have like these calls to each other. And then during World War II, there would be like, you know, boats that would pass by and they would yell to each other to see who was from Newburyport. You know, you go to Foxborough Stadium and you can't find your car, and it's like-
Wow, it works for everything.
Yeah, so when the lawyer was asking me, like, what do you want to name your corporation? I was like, Yeet? And then, and so there's a beer company called Newburyport Brewing now, and they put Yeet all over their cans, and I was tempted to like, call them up and be like, all right, well, if you take care of like the legal fees, I'll, I'll give you that. Like, you can have that beer corporation.
All right.
I'm gonna second the motion.
Thank you.
Before we forget, I'm gonna second the motion.
I thought you were talking about William Butler Yeet.
Yeah.
Yeet, all right, very good, so we have a second. Let's have a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeet. Thank you.
That's a good story.
Yeah, no, I mean, like, if you go to, you'll see people with T-shirts that have like, you know, like the Cape Cod that has like the little white circle, they'll put Yeet on theirs.
Awesome.
We even need a word.
Okay.
There we go, thanks, Dave.
Thank you, guys.
All right, yes.
It's good you interrupted, he's lovely, but he can go on, he can tell a story.
That's a good story. All right, I think we've done everything except, well, coming down to Needham Center project, correct?
Which, yes, the working group?
Yep, okay.
Public hearing, did we do the public hearing for Woodbine Circle, did I miss that?
We did.
We did, it was great.
Okay, I was just gonna ask a question, but that's all right, I missed it. Thank you.
It was probably asked.
We asked a lot of questions, okay.
Okay, so next issue is the Needham Center project working group.
So the last time we did a project in Needham Center, we had a working group with a, a number of stakeholders, and given the, the size of the project, the cost of the project, the number of people who care about what it looks like and really the impact on our downtown, it seemed to make sense to do it again. So we have, for you here for discussion only, the Needham Center Project Working Group, which we're proposing would consist of a member of the select board, somebody from transportation safety, Needham Revitalization Trust Fund, Council of Economic Advisers, the Planning Board, Finance Committee, Mobility Planning Coordination, Climate, Design Review, a small business owner in the center, a restaurant owner in the center, a property owner in the center, two residents at large, and the Director of Public Works. I can tell you, I did serve on this committee in those mid-teen years, there were a lot of meetings, and while this sounds like a big committee, it is nice if you have like 11 of 15 to come because, you know, you're getting kind of a critical mass.
Okay.
Any feedback, let me know, and we'll put it on in August, or if there's somebody missing from, who could possibly be missing.
I already had somebody ask about how they applied, so there's interest.
Great.
Excellent.
I was just gonna say, 15 sounds like a large number, maybe unwieldy even, for scheduling purposes, but, but if you think it's not.
But it'll help you get a quorum.
I think that if, the committee before, there were set meetings, they never changed, and so, you know, they really were relying on, they were always like a 7:00 AM, so they were relying on, you know, that core 10 or 11 who came, and they were sometimes different, so.
The consultants always talked about how important was through public engagement, and they were doing that front and center, so this is my, it's a big group.
It is large for us, yeah.
Does 7:00 AM work for the restaurants?
I am not proposing that we do 7:00, that's what it was the last time.
Okay.
Unlikely it would be working.
Did we have a restaurant on last time?
I don't think so.
Do you remember? Because I do think that's a good idea, but that definitely gets tricky.
Yeah, that came from economic development, they really want some.
Okay.
And sorry, what's the proposed timeline for the committee?
We propose a three-year term of appointment, because this project, if, if we do the 2020, calendar 2025 would be a demonstration project, and so then it would be getting into construction, so, I mean, it's really a long-term plan.
Okay.
And one of the items in the charge is to help figure out how the funding of it would go, so.
Okay. All right, excellent. Thank you. All right, next, we're already done, goal setting.
So in the document that you have, either on paper or online, page 17, the very last page, is where you left off at goal six, responsibly governed. So if you may recall, the categories where you were putting these goals were zero to 18 months, 18 to 36 months, 36 months plus, operationalize, refer, remove, retire, or put it in the budget. Interestingly, none of them ended up as budget priority at this point, like, they weren't just a budget item at this point.
Right.
So the first item, collaborate with the Finance Committee about the town's policies regarding the use of free cash and debt.
So what number is-
Budget priority.
Sorry, page 17, under goal six, very last page of the, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So that'd be a budget priority?
No, I think this is a policy priority.
Yeah, this would be a goal. So it's not something we put in the budget, in other words.
All right, gotcha, but it is about-
And I thought it was my understanding that this is also on their list this year.
I believe they want to do it, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I would say zero to 18 months, I mean, and I think, the reason why I think it's a hybrid is basically what happened in April, like, the, the Department of Revenue certified free cash very late, and we didn't have any policy in place to say where to put it. If we had a policy in place, then we could just automatically put it somewhere.
Yeah, also, we have a lot of stuff coming up, a lot of big infrastructure projects that we're gonna have to pay for, so better to be prepared.
Yeah, makes sense. Well, do you think it will take a committee to have that discussion, or how are you thinking that this collaboration might occur?
I would believe it's after the chair.
Could you come up, actually, Dave, and cue? Sorry about that.
It's always good to have you guys at the table.
This is supposed to be a roundtable.
The, I would envision it would begin with a meeting with the chairs and such, and once there's a formulation of what a policy may be, that that would then be votes of the full committees.
Okay.
It's also possible to have a subcommittee like we did for the Code of Conduct, you know, a couple from each, that, that might be of interest.
That might have a conversation, yeah.
Okay, move on?
Yeah.
Okay, so recruitment initiatives, this is really just, it may be a, may end up in budget priorities, but one of them is what we talked about with Tatiana and HR, but really looking at our policies and trying to make sure that they're the best place that we can be in order to keep recruiting people. We have a couple of other recruitment incentives that we're looking at, one that we will be asking the board, for instance, to allow employees to get RTS stickers, this is like sort of a niche, a niche, but helpful. We're talking to the Park and Rec Commission about pool access, you know, there's a couple of people who would use that. We have an informal program with the superintendent where town employees' children can go to the Needham Public Schools, and he's going to be engaging with the school committee on whether they'd be interested in a formalized policy, so we're hoping to move that forward. One of them that we wanted to ask you whether you would be willing to consider is this hour shift that we do in the summer, continuing that through the, through the year round, which we had, had provided some information with you on that, so if that's something you'd be interested, in at least us moving forward, we could bring you a proposal on that.
Would the summer hours affect the RTS hours as well?
So, that's such a good question. So the, the shift we're proposing for office work only, Town Hall, PSAB, Rosemary, we have separate initiatives going with Public Works to get there and put on what, the, the one that we have in place for RTS is a really good step, but not ideal for the public or the employees necessarily, so we're hoping that creatively the team can come up with, I know people in this room are working on that with the DPW employees, and so, and library, Center of the Heights, really are unaffected. But it, the nice thing about the year-round shift, especially for our Park and Rec staff, is that they never get to do anything in the summer, so they're, I'm sure they're still there right now, so, so that makes sense.
This one, though, it's, I mean, Tatiana was just here, we've been talking about it, we've been changing a lot of these and looking at them, so is this operationalized?
Really just your temperature or whether we can bring you this proposal? We are, just as a reminder, it's not fewer hours, the employees don't work fewer hours, and the buildings are open virtually the same number of hours, but it gives people earlier access and slightly later on one day a week.
And the biggest, well, the decrease in hours is mostly Friday afternoons.
The hours that are shifted away to the other days is Friday afternoon.
Do we know how that impacts the public?
Yes, we actually did, do you want to come up, Tatiana?
We did a, we did a quick survey with the departments, we asked them to keep track of, thank you, we did a quick survey, we asked them to keep track of the Friday afternoon activity for, for Fridays in April and May, to try to gauge basically what would be the cutback. We found that most of the visits were definitely things that could be scheduled, and just people asking for other departments or like, you know, visitors that, that were not really, most visits that could be rescheduled through other times, it wasn't a high level of activity.
So the normal summer hours go from when to when?
Memorial Day to Labor Day?
Memorial, okay, so April and May were before, okay.
When you say scheduled, though, it is a bit more of a burden on people to, to schedule something than just showing up.
Well, for example, somebody scheduled a passport on a Friday afternoon, where they could have scheduled it on a Thursday afternoon, like, you know, that kind of a thing.
And it was like, we were trying, I was trying to gauge whether it was like, if it was a payment to a bill or something like that, is that something that was like, like the deadline was that Friday, or it could have been paid on a different time?
Or put in the payment box.
Or in the payment box, yeah.
And the new hours would be permanent, so people could, it would take some time to adjust, but people would then-
There is a sense that switching makes it complicated for people, too.
But there, there, the benefit would be that there's one night a week, and it's later for folks who can't get there, bye.
How many of the towns do this? How many of the town, like comparable towns do this, do enough?
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but-
I think we should, we should say if we're interested in hearing a proposal-
Right, yes.
And we're not ready to talk about it tonight, right? But I think it, I think there is interest in at least understanding more than we understand But I think it, I think there is interest in at least understanding more than we understand right now. And the other thing that it strikes me is having heard the comment about Parks and Rec is, you know, I think about some of the way, again, at least that my work is structured. If we were not to do this, I would still be open to a proposal for Parks and Rec to have an offset for some other period during the year. I understand that it's beneficial to have the time just to spend in some different ways and take care of some other things in your life, and to know that that's predictably going to be there, so.
We do have the data, and if you're.
No, no, we're doing goals now, we're not doing.
We will review that. Good, thank you, Tatiana.
Thank you.
Sorry to put you on the spot. Sign bylaw review.
Yep. And we put this on your list really for two reasons. I think, one, it's reading how to appropriately implement the sign bylaw and enforce it. Questions always come up during the year, and they tend to come up around temporary charitable, educational, political, and religious signs, when it is something that is particularly maybe sensitive, or during election season, or, and so the time to kind of revisit and dig into the bylaw is usually not in that moment, where we have that question before us for enforcement. And so, we thought it might be good to just make a goal to revisit it in general, not in the moment when there's kind of a concrete example that we're trying to address. There also was a Supreme Court decision, I think 2015, that spoke to charitable, educational, political, and religious signs. I don't know that our bylaw is in violation, but if this were to be a goal, we would ask town council to make sure that we are in alignment with that court ruling.
Yes, okay.
So this is also in line with the flag policy? Yes?
Yes.
I mean, is it sort of?
Yeah.
Feels like if we're doing one, we might do the other.
Yeah, it's a good governance, responsibly governed.
We also have a provision in the sign bylaw that prohibits neon signs, and it's very difficult, there are neon signs, you know, many things get enforced by complaint, and so people put up new neon signs, so it's like, should we just allow them, or, you know, should we get rid of them? But there hasn't been, it's been hard to focus attention, like Katie said, it's like, when somebody makes a complaint that day, isn't the time to dig into the policy question of whether there should be neon or not.
Question, is this about the, just the lawn signs, or all the design review board signs?
So the sign bylaw is more broad, I think, where we've had issues tend not to be with the design review board permits for a commercial business. But we could further scope this if you wanted to be a goal. I have not thought through, kind of, how would we undertake this review?
And we could ask them to.
Yeah.
I just know that they work together.
Yes. But those temporary charitable, educational, political signs are not subject to permit, and so are not under a design review board, but they are in the sign bylaw.
I was gonna say, my sense was, this was really addressing pieces that didn't go to the design review board, but maybe that was the wrong presumption.
We can, and I think it's a good conversation, when we, if you wanna move in this direction, we can do the scope and, you know, see what might be. And when we did.
Talk to the design review.
Yeah, when we did the bylaw review committee, we did say that if we came upon things that were under someone's purview, we would say, do you wanna take a look at neon, for instance, you know, that, but they don't have the lawn signs essentially, they are responsible.
When we talk about lawn signs, are we talking about residential lawn signs?
Or in some cases, in some cases.
Or lawn signs that are put up commercially, or.
So what are the issues that have been encountered?
There's a, there's one section on mobile signs.
Yeah.
That's complicated. We've had trucks that have.
So in one part of the bylaw, a temporary sign for those charitable, educational, political, religious purposes are allowed for a certain amount of time. And then in another part of the bylaw, it says a sign can never be affixed to a car, and I don't know, often I don't know how to reconcile those, or if something's on a car versus there's actually like mobile digital billboards, if you were on the Dedham Court in the last couple of months, you would have seen a lot of those. And so those sorts of things get challenging, you know, is, so I think just taking another look at the actual language in our bylaw with these real-world scenarios that we've dealt with, is what prompted putting it on the list.
But is it taking up to staff time, like, are there complaints related to these?
It makes enforcement tougher to be consistent about it, or to feel like we can really stand on what's currently drafted.
Well, and I think we actually had situations where we got the complaints and concluded that we couldn't enforce based on what was in it. So you still dealt with the complaints and frustration without taking any action because there was this ambiguity. Well, ambiguity in a bylaw is bad, period, you know, it's gotta be clear, so.
Zero to eighteen, eighteen to thirty-six. Sounds like zero to eighteen, I mean, if staff are spending time on this, then the more we can clear, okay?
Yeah, I think my only just thought bubble in the moment is maybe on the later half of the zero to eighteen, because the person that's working on this is also involved in stormwater entries and large house review. So.
Yeah, but that's exactly right.
Yeah.
Code of Conduct review? I didn't put this one on.
Didn't, who, I mean, what?
Somebody did, I'm sorry, I don't know.
We did the code of conduct.
Is this what we did last year?
Somebody asked me to put this on for this discussion, I'm sorry.
Put it on for this discussion, okay.
Maybe we'll come up with it.
Maybe we could take this off the list.
So the only thing that I think.
No one wants to talk about it.
So the only thing that I think we talked about with that was, was there a way to broaden that to some other committees? I mean, to me, that would have been the next step there, I don't think I put it on for that reason, but are there other committees that would be having a discussion about?
Some that have done it, yeah.
Code of Conduct, so I mean, in that sense, the board has an interest in seeing that promulgated, but I don't think this is a huge focus of ours at this point in time, would be my view.
Maybe inviting others to review it.
We did, yeah.
Well, but there's been some changes in the boards, and so. For those that didn't adopt it, maybe they second crack at it.
Yeah.
If I find any notes as to why it was here.
But meanwhile, you don't have to work on that one, this is good, we found one.
Yeet.
Never works that way. Yeet. That's our new yay.
Anti-day packer.
Policy updates. Miles, is that you, do you have some that you wanna, do you just generally have some that you wanna work on? Okay.
Metrics and targets.
I put this one on because in years past, not being on the board, I've read through the goals and have not understood, like, exactly how they're meant to be accomplished. These conversations have helped a lot, but for other boards involved, I think it can be a mystery. So maybe I would change this just a little bit to say, like, when this is published. Actually, I don't even know how to say, like.
How do we know if we did it?
Exactly, yeah, 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 just accountability, yeah.
So I wonder, too, Josh, I think that's a good observation, is it's not just how do we know if we did it, because I think we're generally good about coming back at some point and saying we did it, and it's clear to everybody at that point. I think what's confusing is we think about this sort of as a multi-year process, because there's sort of this, it gets on the list, it's sort of percolating, we're trying to finish up some other stuff, and then it comes up, so zero to eighteen, or eighteen and beyond. So I think even the sense of where it is in the buckets will be useful to people, and more information than we've given in the past. But you're right, when we're in the thick of it, we sort of have a sense of where all these things are, but other people, I can understand it would be much less clear.
And something that might be helpful as a separate document is to publish it, we publish it by goal.
Right.
But maybe publishing it at some point by bucket.
Timeline.
By bucket, yeah.
Well, we do have mid-year review, too, that is published, and it's in the packet, it's not like.
Yes, yes, I'm thinking more like, you know, creating something like this that isn't a photo of a poster board, so people know, oh, this is where, and hopefully even within zero to eighteen, we've prioritized.
Right.
That's the goal.
Right.
Well, and not, and obviously, Josh, you're the one that put this on here, but what this also says to me is not necessarily getting something done, but having done something, does it accomplish what we want? So if the goal is to increase something or improve something, you know, we may have made the change, you know, and that's not gonna be all these goals, I'd suggest it's maybe a small number of goals, but I'm thinking, for example, you know, like, setting a production goal for affordable housing units there, you know, how are we doing against our goal? So there may be certain things where we really do wanna track whether our policy is successful in achieving what it's supposed to achieve, not just did we do the thing.
So for instance, like, with employee retention, like, can we track, you know, what's the attrition rate, like, how many employees voluntarily leave each year, does it improve?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's good for us to know whether these policies are good or not, you know, do they achieve what we want them to achieve? But again, I think it's a small number.
I think we can, you know, have. We can report back on what we think might be a tracking mechanism? So is that sort of more of a guiding principle on how we do goals as opposed to an actual goal?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
This is yours, too, Josh.
Oh, you're right, this was mine. So just in the last couple of months, I've seen like emails from residents, you know, about billing and pool hours and conservation or flooding, like, anything. And I've just seen a wide variety of response times to the public's request, and sometimes, sometimes it meets the public's expectation, sometimes it doesn't. And I just think there should be some sort of policy that sets an expectation, like, when should there be a response that, you know, something's been received, and then by when should there be a full response? Or sometimes even, you know, questions might go to not the right person to answer a question, so, you know, just having a response say, you know, we've received it, you know, I'm going to forward, or CC this other person who can answer a question.
So we've actually, the leadership team, which is the group of sixty, actually, has started preparing something, we're calling the NIDIM standard, and that will be in there, is what the expectation of response, doesn't mean you'll get your answer, it means that somebody will say, we heard you, and we'll get back to you. So we will be doing this, and we can report that back to you.
The next one is mine, it's about data collection. I think I'm interested in collecting more information on what we're doing, what our processes are, not about our processes, but, for example, I think that some of our building permits are not tagged with, like, energy upgrade, or there's no way to track how many residents have turned over their old heating systems, have installed a charger, have removed a tree, have applied for ADU permits, et cetera. And so I'm just interested, you know, as we take a look at a lot of our systems, as we try to enforce or pursue some of our climate goals, as we talk about making a town policy on trees, for example, we just don't have the data to tell us what we're doing right now, or where we're starting from, to tell how we're progressing and what progress we're making. And so I'm wondering, I guess, within the building department, or in the assessor's office, we talked about this when we were talking about trees, just how we can collect that information so that we have more basis to understand our starting point, and then how much progress we make.
I actually think this is a great example of Josh's point on developing measurable metrics and targets, this is an example, right? So for how are we doing in our climate goals? How would you know how we're doing while you would collect this data?
Yeah, so particularly as we move into the specialized building code, and we have some climate goals that we wanna keep, it's, from what I understand, and this may be incorrect or incomplete, we're not collecting all of the information, you know, in the building department, that we would need to know how many goals we're completing, or what kind of progress we're making. We have all that information for town buildings, and town vehicles, and town whatever, infrastructure, but we don't have it, and so I'm just wondering how we can capture it elsewhere.
Could this be a goal to explore whether this can be done, or more can be done?
Um.
I don't know the answer to.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely just operational challenges for how to do this, but if this is a board priority, I think the goal is to work through those challenges. You know, our current, the system we use for permitting doesn't let itself for easy, like, at a click box and just spit out a report, it's a much heavier lift than that, but if it's a policy goal, we'll have to just work through, you know, what, how do we do it?
Or maybe we could just better understand what the challenges are, so we can decide how to approach it, if we feel like it's worth it to change systems, or if we can collect it another way, or if we, in fact, can't afford to collect it.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we start with, if this is a board priority, just thinking through it, I'd wanna just get really clear on what is the data that you want us to collect, and then we could figure out what is easy or not easy right now with our current systems, and then we could go from there.
It's what to collect, how to collect it, and then how to interpret it.
Yeah, I mean, when we talk about teardowns, when we talk about trees coming down, whether they're coming down because they're diseased, when they're, what kind of property they're on, public or private, when we talk about, you know, who's clearing them, a homeowner or a developer, or whatever, like, we don't have any of that information, so when the town residents come to us and say, we want a tree bylaw that deals with all these things, like, we have no information to start with, so.
I think that we can certainly find out if there are mechanisms to capture some of this data, some of the data is not, there is not an ability to capture. I can cut down a tree that's on my property, I don't need anybody's permission, I don't need a file for a permit or anything.
True.
So there is some information that's just not knowable. The other thing is, there's also a limitation on regulatory boards of what they're allowed to collect. The Board of Assessors are not allowed to collect information that's not part of the assessment process, because all the data they collect is public information, and the Department of Revenue does not want you gathering information that's not actually necessary determining equitable value. So there are some limitations that we need to understand, and I think that's what we can come back to the board on, is what is it that we're allowed to collect? Secondly, what would be necessary in order to collect them, to make a determination of how to move forward.
I mean, I can imagine some data collected by the building commissioner, or building inspectors, could be easier to collect, like, in the process of applying for a permit, or approving, or signing off on the completion of a permit, you can see, you know, is it, what type of unit is it, is it electric, is it gas, is it?
I think what Katie's saying is it's not an alterable, easily alterable system, so it seems like it should be just a click box, but if the system won't take a click box, then it's not, then it's a bigger project. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, maybe this is just fact finding.
Right. Do you want that evaluation in zero to eighteen, eighteen to thirty-six? So. You can put it in there, but you have to prioritize at the end.
Right.
Can I stop for a second? I would almost say to the board, if the board's interested in this, I think it would be worth a small discussion, a subgroup maybe of the board first, to think about what we believe might be the most critical statistics, I mean, this is conceivably huge. So given what's in front of us, what do we think might be the most critical pieces? And then come back with some specific requests.
To Dave's point, like, not all of this will be collectible, so maybe understanding what is collectible.
Yeah.
But the subgroup could have like a discussion first to get that, but I do think there's gonna be some work to say, this is what we think will actually be valuable for the following reasons, and then we've got a systems issue, but otherwise I worry that it's wide open, I mean.
It's like a short-term subcommittee to look at the data collection.
Yeah. Because I worry about, the goal is not to create a million rock fetches, right?
Yes.
That's not it, so we need to know what's gonna be valuable to us.
Got it.
But I like the idea of having concrete data, and I know it can be hard to get, so.
Success for you.
Yeah, this is me. So I just noticed that there, well, on the personal side, there are two contracts that we need to focus on this year.
Just one, I think.
Well, I thought it was the town manager and the. Well, I thought it was the town manager and the fire chief.
Oh, all right. I thought you meant the police. Sorry.
Oh, I guess there's, yeah, I guess there's that too. But that's, so I just think since those are time sensitive, those should be top priority for successor agreements. And then there was another one with utilities, because I think our electric and gas contract is expiring. Is that right?
The supply for natural gas expired, and we're on the EverSource default program. We actually have a releasing on Thursday, an RFP for energy procurement advisory services so that we can prepare for going out to bacon for natural gas supply. Our electric contract, electric supply contract expires in December 24, which is also going to be part of this procurement. We're looking to see if there are any advantages to procure both at the same time. Or we'll find out that there isn't, but we're going through that exercise now.
Okay. So I guess utilities doesn't, is already taken.
And the course of distribution transmission is regulated.
I guess I'm just wondering, wouldn't both of these items be sort of under the regular purview of the town manager administratively? Like, does it have to be a select board goal?
Well, the town manager's contract, absolutely, and the fire chief's contract tangentially are your responsibility.
Yeah, I understand that there are responsibilities, but isn't it something that you typically put together? And negotiate, like the select board doesn't negotiate the town, the fire chief's contract.
That's true.
So we review it and move it forward with a vote, but we don't put it together. I'm hearing that the same is true for procurement for utilities.
Well, but it does take a priority for staff time, so I think it's valuable to acknowledge that it's going to be a key piece of work this year.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
They have to be done, so.
They do have to be done.
Yeah.
I mean, none of our goals have to be glamorous. I mean, I think just getting to the nitty gritty, there's some really important things.
Trust me, I believe that. We could put the warrant and the butt mess. I mean, at some point, right, you have to. Next to you too.
Sorry. Okay, put a line here.
You care about responsible government.
This came up at town meeting. Someone just asked how town councils evaluate, and it seems like we have evaluations for, you know, other positions. It seems important to have an evaluation of town council as well, just on an annual basis maybe.
What do we do with, when Tobin was a town council?
You didn't, but I can certainly explore what other towns do and see if they have any advice.
I was going to say, certainly my experience has been, both on the school committee and here, is that when that relationship is not going well, everybody knows, right? And is clear, there's some discussion about are we being well-served or not? I think the board does ask Kate and has had feedback from Kate at regular intervals about whether she and town staff feel like they are being well-served by our current council after we made shifts when it was clear that we were not being, not in the best position anymore. And so I guess I don't know that annual is really a thing, but it could be interesting to have data from other towns. It's just, otherwise, I'm not sure that the process adds a huge amount of value annually based on what I've seen.
Could be a short process, I guess, but.
Yeah. You may do the evaluation every time you get the invoice.
So we've never had a year go by where there's been no discussion of this. That's what I would say, I guess. There's never been a year where there's been zero discussion, so.
You know, and the other, we've talked about this with other departments, highlighting the good things that are happening is always good too, so.
Yeah.
I can, if you want to do like an evaluation, you know, explore what an evaluation system might look like, we're happy to do it.
Well, I would say though, that it, it's not the kind of thing, like maybe there are other sort of contractual things where it makes sense to change year to year. There's a benefit with the town council to have continuity.
Yeah.
So it isn't like a yearly re-up, like a software license or something. I mean, it's, you know.
I'm thinking of it like the same way we do the town manager evaluation. It's an annual evaluation. It doesn't mean that you change, you know, who you're working with. It just means you know, you know, we have a conversation about it. The next one was mine too. It's kind of a pet peeve of mine that we have so many amazing town buildings and we still rent out a location at the golf course for elections. It seems like we could just, you know, discuss reviewing the voting locations with, you know, the town clerk and see.
So we did just do this, the overwhelming interest was to move out of the schools for safety. So we landed on the golf course because of the precincts that it served. And then we moved here, and we moved to Cath, right? So we pulled out of high school, Broad Meadow.
Mitchell.
Hillside, Mitchell. So I guess.
Well, no, but like, aren't there other town buildings that serve a similar precinct as the golf course, like it's PSAB?
We tried PSAB, it was a disaster.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, the room, this room is very small. The very first year of the precinct review, we were at PSAB.
Okay.
I'll get you the report.
Rosemary's used too.
Okay. Do we don't, we voted Rosemary?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So as the new buildings come on, we've moved out of the schools and into them. We don't have one over there. And I believe this town hall was where the high school, the high school voters came here. Was that where you were, Marion?
I was at Mitchell.
I was at town hall, and now we're at Rosemary. I mean, I was at the high school, and now we're at Rosemary. It was great. I walked down the hall.
So we don't have to do this.
I'll get you the report anyway. Thanks. We went to the golf course after that. Was that during the pandemic?
I was going to say, it had a lot of discussion before and moving around, in fact, trying some things then, so.
So goal seven, stormwater bylaw, I mean, I think, I believe we have a stormwater goal already, so moving it into that. I mean, there's going to be a stormwater goal.
Yeah.
I'm not finding it, but I know it's there. Tree canopy, the same thing. We already have a goal, so we'll just restructure the goal to be like all things trees.
Yeah.
And all things stormwater.
Yep.
The two that came from climate, the EV first policy, I would recommend this in the zero to 18. I think this, the climate committee has been really judicious in parceling out things that can be done, and I already have a draft, so.
Plus, it teases up for funding.
Yeah, I was going to say, does this not unlock potential?
This unlocks that requirement for the new leaders.
Yeah. Which is part of why Kate already has a draft, to be honest.
Well, that and the amazing hire we had.
I was going to say, thank you to Gabby.
I think the technology's gone a long way, because I think I remember someone asking me about this way back at Newman Town Meeting. And like, the answer was it wasn't feasible. Like, it's not going to serve. But I think the technology can now.
For almost everything, police, there's, they're almost there. Ladder truck, you know, like that's going to, those are going to be the very last things. If we could get the bus infrastructure, I mean, that's huge, all day, every day, the buses, the school buses, so. That'd be, and you know, Public Works is really pushing in that direction. Tree preservation bylaw is just part of the tree goal pace. Is this climate as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's financing for private entities.
I have to admit, I don't know how much effort this is.
The. We're looking at the process now. It really is the state more so than the town, the mechanism. And we have posed some questions to the state in terms of the operation of the program and how that would handle and the implications, as well as a recent Supreme Court decision on foreclosures and actions. And that might be taking away the, I think, the benefit that the state was looking into ensure repayment of these loans from private parties. But we are exploring it, but my understanding is the town's participation would be able to create a billing mechanism for the private lender to the private, private commercial operation. So we are exploring that. We're also exploring to see if this program is available to the Needham Housing Authority, for instance. The initial reaction from the state was no, but Gabby rephrased the question. And they're studying it to see if perhaps it might be available. So we are spending some time on it. I don't believe the, outside of the initial implementation, if we were to go down this road, I don't believe the ongoing work is going to be a heavy lift.
Great. So should we explore? Should this be an explore, since we're already exploring it? Or do you want to operationalize it or put it on, keep it on the list as a?
Do we know enough to operationalize it, or should we leave it at explore?
I would say explore because I, we would be coming back to the boards. The two boards that would be impacted is the Select Board and the Board of Assessors, and then indirectly the Council of Economic Advisers for the town.
Okay. The climate strategy, I mean, we have a committee and a staff person who are recommended this and willing to engage on it, and I'm happy to put that on the zero to 18.
Yeah.
We have a lot there.
It's.
This isn't the same people.
No, I sense from this is the committee saying they want to do a lot, a bit more retail reach out to residents of putting solar on your roof, switching out to an air exchange, you know, water heater. There are certain things that residents could avail themselves to, but the townwide program might get them to do it.
Somebody put on the plastics, further plastics reduction?
Right. So that was an issue with Green Needham is eager to take another bite of the apple and considering do they do a plastic ban? So that's something either, do we want to do it, or do we want, can we need them to do another citizens petition?
Has the state, you know, the state has some ban or legislation.
Yeah, that's hanging out there too. I don't know the disposition of that.
Wait until, because that might basically answer our question for us.
Termins tomorrow, isn't it?
I was going to say, well, no sooner if anything passed.
July 21st is tomorrow.
All right. Defra this.
18 to 36? 36 plus?
18 to 36.
18 to 36. If the state's doing it, they'll be really quick.
Yeah. The final one, council has identified an option where we think we can regulate non-electric vehicles parking in electric vehicle spaces through the traffic rules and regulations, which would be hearing by you and not a larger action. So I think the goal is to do something about this problem. It's mostly a problem at the pool. I mean, I've asked if it happens at PSAB, and people who are there a lot say very rarely somebody will park and run in and run out because they're right in front, but the pool is, I think, the big problem.
Yeah.
And we think it happens at the pool because we're otherwise out of parking spaces?
Yeah. Or if people don't want to walk to the top one perhaps.
Yeah.
You know, after your meeting, when you did the goal setting, there was a swim meet, and I went that way, and people were everywhere. Big nights. They're probably there tonight, that swim.
Excellent.
So, Mr. Chair, we will draft these up. I did ask if people have, you know, sort of their top priorities in the zero to 18. I can send out those zero to 18 again, and anybody who wants to either, who hasn't weighed in, weigh in or wants to rethink about theirs because we hadn't done these.
I would love to see all of them in a group, so I would appreciate that at least.
And that will, it's not what's going to get done, it's what gets first, really, because we, it's already July.
Yeah, I do think that's a disadvantage of doing it one by one like this, because we haven't really said what's more important than what, or what's more urgent to do fast.
We'll be back August 13th.
Okay.
Well, we sort of did talk about a couple of things, about that's later in the 18 months, or that's earlier in the 18 months, but yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else? Committee reports, anyone? It's not on the agenda, so we can't do it.
But you could, but you could give them in August 13th.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. Great. Well, let's just hang here all night then.
We are all anxiously awaiting for feedback from EO HLC.
Yes.
That's right. Soon.
Could be tomorrow.
Real soon, so.
All right.
I look forward to that.
But we have gotten a response from the AG's office with minor comments, minor corrective comments, like no big deal. So that's a good sign. It doesn't comment to the map, but it comments to the legality of what we put together.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'm so moved.
Second.
That's fast, okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Night one of the pilot, zero to 10?
Oh, I think this is good.
I like it.
I like it.
Did you have to look at yourself? Is it hard enough?
It's a little distracting, like.